The ban on conversion therapy will remain in the city of La Crosse for now. Common Council has decided to revisit the ordinance in 60 days. News 8 Now's Dua Israar explains why the issue has divided members of the Cooley region. Dua?
Ken, conversion therapy is a controversial practice that attempts to change a person's sexual and gender identity or preferences. While some groups in La Crosse are in favor of upholding the ban, one group says it infringes on their constitutional rights and the city of La Crosse should allow the practice. Early this evening, members of the Common Council went into a closed session over the city's conversion therapy ban ordinance. One hour later, council members returned and decided to revisit the ordinance in 60 days. Mayor Mitch Reynolds says the ban was called into reconsideration because of language that would open the city up to legal repercussions.
So, the original legislation had for a fee in the legislation and the recommendation from our legal department was to reinsert that.
Originally, those who conducted conversion therapy would have to be compensated making the act illegal. Shannon McKinney, co-founder of Savior Rights Coalition La Crosse, says the ordinance should be reconsidered for constitutional reasons.
It targeted those people for their religious beliefs.
McKinney says the ban infringes on people's freedom of religion.
A pastor can't pastor a child that perhaps a parent has sent their way according to his religious beliefs. And so, obviously, the church has firmly held religious beliefs. It's going to practice that and it's going to teach that.
She says if the ban is not lifted, the group may seek legal action. Alicia Shandelmeyer, the executive director for the Center Seven Rivers LGBTQ Connection, says the ordinance protects all children.
Conversion therapy is inaccurate and it can be a very violent, mentally damaging process.
Constitutional law expert and UW-Madison professor Howard Schuber says while parents' rights have been historically protected by courts, religious freedom does not apply in cases of abuse.
Where courts find that what parents want to do would be harmful to the child, then the fact that it's motivated by religion is not a protection. The state's interest in protecting children against harm trumps parents or anyone else's, for that matter, interest in free exercise of religion.
He says conversion therapy has not been around long enough for clear legal decisions to be made. Now, Mayor Mitch Reynolds says that members of the council believe in the ban will stay, but they have the ability to add or subtract anything from the ordinance within the next 60 days. Ken?
All right. Thanks a lot, Dua. Experts say conversion therapy cases may appear more frequently on the national level under the current Roberts Supreme Court. Let's take a break, send it over to meteorologist Eric Dean for a quick look at our forecast.
Hey, good evening, Ken. Good evening, everybody. Hey, we are now seeing that line of thunderstorms starting to push its way into the Cooley region. Here's a look at the radar scan and you're noticing over towards the Winona area, just the south and even north of Winona, seeing some heavy rain. Same story just to the west of La Crosse. Here's I-90. You can see it pushing into portions of Minnesota, just south of Rochester, seeing that thunderstorm activity as well. Now, that's just the precursor of what is to come. Take a look here at the satellite radar. You can see that lineup thunderstorms pushing its way into portions of Minnesota. Now, this is going to take a northwest to southeasterly track, so this is something we're going to keep an eye on over the next several hours. So, let's take a look outside right now. We're seeing temperatures in the 70s from Eau Claire down to Verocua, over towards Decora, upper 60s towards Volk Field, 66 in Sparta, as well as Black River Falls. So, overall, not a bad evening. The humidity is starting to go up, so our feels like temperature is 79 here in La Crosse. Now, we are going to see basically the rain chances in the forecast through the next several hours. And the question is, how much can we expect? I'll have that answer coming up in the first of our forecast in a few minutes. Ken, back to you.
Thanks a lot, Eric. Meanwhile, the OK hand gesture has sometimes been used by white supremacists as a way to symbolize white power. That's according to the Southern Poverty Law Center. Well, an image of a La Crosse County Sheriff's deputy making the OK gesture has made the rounds on social media in the past 24 hours. News 8 Now's Rob Romano has the latest.
This image of 10 La Crosse County Sheriff's deputies smiling in a photo at the recent Country Boom Music Festival has led to controversy. Third from the right in the picture is La Crosse County Sheriff Sergeant Brandon Penscover, making the hand gesture symbolizing OK. In an email, La Crosse County Sheriff Jeff Wolf says Penscover's gesture, quote, "had no intent as perceived." Still, because the OK gesture has been used by some white supremacists, such as Richard Spencer in the past, some in the community are concerned.
I think we need to address this, put this out there.
Michael Reynolds believes the officer's gesture had a white supremacist undertone.
That's just the beginning and it explains a lot of what's going on in the world. It's been here. There's nothing, nothing's going to be done about this.
According to the Anti-Defamation League, caution must be used when evaluating whether the OK hand gesture is being used for racist purposes. An ADL source says nothing in this image indicates that the individual is making a white supremacist hand gesture, but if that's the case, then why was it removed from social media? I asked Sheriff Wolf in an email why the photo of Sergeant Penscover was taken down if there was no intent behind the gesture, and I am waiting to hear back. Still, some like David Howell just want the sheriff sergeant fired.
It's really hurting the belief force by making gestures like that. If you don't stand up for what is right, then you'll fall for anything.
In La Crosse, Rob Romano, News 8 Now.
And La Crosse County Sheriff Jeff Wolf denies any intent behind Sheriff Sergeant Penscover's use of the upside-down OK gesture. The Sparta man accused of killing a woman in Sparta still does not have an attorney. 32-year-old Sean Hock had another initial appearance in court today and will be scheduled to have another one later. An attorney with the Public Defender's Office said during today's appearance that finding available public defenders is becoming more difficult.
This isn't only an issue in our office, it's becoming a statewide issue. The pandemic caused both private bar attorneys and staff attorneys to seek other, perhaps, opportunities. So typically, this kind of case would be difficult to point out and it's even more difficult now.
Hock's next appearance is scheduled for August 17th. A ruling by the Wisconsin Supreme Court threw out the use of ballot drop boxes, which popped up during the pandemic. But there is more coming out of that ruling, which is why the state's top elections administrator is clarifying some things today. Part of the ruling included guidance on who can return absentee ballots. The court determined voters themselves have to return their ballots, so you cannot return the ballot for a close friend or family member. The Wisconsin Elections Commission Administrator says it's always best to ask if you're unsure what to do.
Again, I would check with your local election official as they are the ones in their communities that are responsible for administering that process.
Now, there is one big caveat in that rule specifically for voters with disabilities. They can receive help putting their ballots in the mail. The high court declined to rule on that issue and disability rights advocates say a federal law allows for that. Meanwhile, in Minnesota, absentee voting for the August 9 primary is underway. Election officials say some of the special pandemic-related rules from 2020 are being rolled back. That means this time around, if you're in Minnesota, you will need a witness signature on your absentee ballot. And while last time your ballot had to be postmarked by election day, this year it has to be back by election day.
This time around, there's no extension past election day. It needs to be in in order for it to be counted.
Though if your absentee ballot is rejected anywhere in the state because of a problem with the witness signature, the county election clerk will send another ballot back to you. In the wake of the Supreme Court overturning Roe v. Wade, Planned Parenthoods of Illinois and Wisconsin are announcing a partnership to increase abortion access. Leaders at the Reproductive Health Centers announced efforts Thursday to provide access to abortion, which remains legal in Illinois. Doctors in Wisconsin halted the procedure while courts determine whether the state's 1849 law banning most abortions stands. Officials say Illinois centers have seen a tenfold increase in patients since the Supreme Court decision back on June 24th. A big change for Planned Parenthood is an enhanced navigation team that will organize travel to Illinois.
Abortion providers from Wisconsin now travel to Illinois several days a week to expand access to care at our Waukegan Health Center.
That Waukegan clinic is just south of the Wisconsin border. Welch says earlier this year, Wisconsin's staff spent several days training in Illinois for licenses to be able to practice there. Gunderson Health System is inviting everyone to participate in a nationwide health study. The All of Us Research Program aims to learn more about why people get sick or stay healthy. Program is headed by the National Institutes of Health. If you want to take part, you may be asked to complete surveys or give some bio samples. Researchers will not be able to see your name or other identifiers. By looking for patterns in the information, researchers hope to pinpoint what affects people's health. Participants may also get some extra information about themselves.
If you do agree to give the blood or saliva, you'll get actually some genetic information. You might get some information telling you how you handle certain medications, information on your ancestry.
The National Health Institute hopes to enroll 1 million people into this program. It's expected to last 10 years. We have a link with more information about signing up on news8000.com. Still ahead, a changing of command. Fort McCoy's garrison welcomes a new leader. And later, a new profile system on Facebook, the social media site testing out multiple profiles under one single account.
We are proud to live in a region that produces some of the finest goods and services and we are excited to bring them to you.
Tune in on Mondays before CBS mornings and during News 8 Now at noon to learn more about one local business that is proudly serving our community. Made Right Here is brought to you by the CRBC, Ladco, and News 8 Now. For more information and to view our Made Right Here stories, visit news8000.com backslash Made Right Here.
It's time, time to get out and rediscover Ho-Chunk Gaming Black River Falls. Grab your friends and play for the day, or two, or three. It's time for you to win, laugh, and enjoy. Over 650 slot machines, tables, bingo, great rewards, delicious food. Ho-Chunk Gaming, just what you need. Get out again and experience the difference at Ho-Chunk Gaming Black River Falls.
You're not always going to be here, but you always have this. Whether you're here, here, or anywhere really, the News 8000 app lets you stay updated on your time. Get it today so you can have here, here.
Introducing new One a Day Multi Plus, a complete multivitamin, plus an extra boost of support for your immunity, brain, and hair, skin, and nails. New One a Day Multi Plus.
A ceremony at Fort McCoy today marked the changing of command for the garrison. Colonel Michael D. Posse relinquished command of the U.S. Army Garrison Fort McCoy to Colonel Stephen T. Messenger. Posse says it's a bittersweet day for him and that he's enjoyed everyone he's worked with at the installation.
Being the garrison commander of Fort McCoy has been the best position of my 35-year Army career and without a doubt, I'd stay forever if I could. But of course, the position is tenured and it was just a great day to thank everyone for the accomplishments that we have.
Now, Posse will still be at Fort McCoy, but he will now head the 88th Readiness Division. He says the incoming garrison leader is excited to take his new position to the next level. Young girls in the Boys and Girls Club got a glance at a possible career path. More than 30 girls between grades three and seven toured Trane Technologies. They saw the products Trane makes, a materials lab, and an acoustics lab. This field trip aims to interest young girls in science and engineering. Young girls from the Boys and Girls Clubs also went to J.F. Brennan's headquarters to learn about careers in construction. Kids toured the Brennan Marine tugboat, shipping yard, shop, and corporate offices. Young girls also got to pilot an underwater remote-controlled vehicle.
I just want to give those opportunities to young girls who might feel the same way that I did coming out, like, ah, that's not really a place for me. I found a home here. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do anything but construction, so give them that opportunity to learn.
And this is the second year that the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater La Crosse have coordinated the event. Still to come, if you haven't made weekend plans, we've got some folks who'd love for you to swing by. We'll have a rundown of some local fairs and festivals that just might strike your fancy.
Line of thunderstorms I was talking about earlier is now starting to push its way into the Cooley region. I'll have details on that on the other side of the break. Stay with us.
Folks, everybody in Wisconsin needs access to high-speed, affordable internet. It's why I work to expand high-speed internet to 300,000 homes and businesses. I want to double that in the next four years. It's the right thing to do for Wisconsin.
Perkins Bakery-inspired breakfasts are a sweet deal, starting at just $7.99. Indulge in our new breakfast platters, inspired by all your bakery favorites. And don't forget to treat the family to a pie from our bakery, including our Tangy Lemon Meringue Pie. Save time and order online at PerkinsToGo.com.
Dear gas prices, Toyota's hybrid lineup says, "Go take a hike because we bring efficiency with power and savings with style." Think you can stand in our way? We got this, Toyota hybrids.
Get 1.9% APR for 48 months on a new 2022 Toyota Corolla, Camry, RAV4, Highlander, or Tacoma. Find yours at toyota.com. Toyota, let's go places.
Tune in Fridays at noon for Financial Fridays with WNB Financial and Holman. Learn about important topics in banking and finance from a local team that's focused on service, solutions, and community. WNB Financial, more than a bank. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Find comfort in your world in a stressless recliner. Take a time out, have a seat, and enjoy a special offer from Drury's in Fountain, Minnesota. Save in an instant on stressless furniture at Drury's in Fountain. Right now, get a $100 instant rebate for every $1,000 you spend on any qualifying stressless sofas and recliners, designed with the world's most innovative comfort features. Don't wait, it's time for Stressless, on sale now at Drury's in Fountain, Minnesota.
Every farm family needs high-speed internet. Tony Evers expanded high-speed internet to over 300,000 farms, homes, and businesses, including this fiber line here in Dodgeville. From sunup to sundown, we use a lot of technology here on the farm. Tony Evers is doing the right thing for Wisconsin.
CityCam 8 is brought to you by The Board Store. Our new windows in your future? We're a Provia Platinum Dealer with certified installers. We'll help you find the best style, color, and glass options for your budget. Thank you for watching News 8 Now, our community, your station.
The Tremolo County Fair kicks off today and for the next four days, members of the community can grab a bite to eat while wandering the fairgrounds. Festival goers enjoyed carnival tonight along with a rodeo at the Grandstand Arena. Tomorrow through the weekend, there will be several truck and tractor pulls, as well as a big demolition derby on Saturday night. Tremolo County young people aged 16 to 21 will also participate in the fairest of the fair, where entrants can compete for the title. And if you're looking for another festival taking place this weekend, head on down to St. Elias for the 48th year of their Mediterranean Festival at the Orthodox Church's grounds. The festival is free to the public and will include folk dancing and music from a Bulgarian folk band. There will also be food available for purchase, such as chicken kebab and falafel. The money raised by the festival goes directly toward running the church. Leaders at the church say this could be a big first step toward expanding, since the church currently seats just 40 people.
We do have some plans drawn up to expand the building and hopefully, if the festival is successful and we meet our regular obligations, some of this money can be used to help with that foundation.
Now, festival starts at noon on Sunday, runs until 5 o'clock. We'll have more information posted on our website. Whether you're going to festivals or just want to be outdoors for the weekend, we just need a nice forecast to make it all happen. Eric Dean, what do you got for us?
Short-term, this weekend's OK. Just take the rain gear just in case to get under a stray shower, too, and make sure you have that free First Alert Weather app. That is a free app on the App and Play Store. Outside right now, we're seeing a temperature of 77. Humidity is sitting at 56% or dew points up a little bit at 60, so it feels like 79 out there. Winds are out of the southeast at around 7 miles per hour. Made it to 86 today after a morning start of 61. That 86 is where we should be for this time of year. 65 is where we should be on the low end, nowhere near a record. Look at that, 108, so back in 1936. We're sitting at just shy of an inch below normal, nine tenths of an inch below normal for the entire month of July, just over three inches below normal for the entire year. So, that rain chance that's in the forecast is much needed. First Alert Forecast for tomorrow, the thunderstorms will continue in the morning hours. They're going to diminish in the afternoon hours. The clouds will diminish as well, making for an overall nice Friday evening. Winds will be out of the southeast at around 5 to 10 miles per hour. The rain chances over the next several hours, they really start to ramp up between 11 o'clock going into the 5 o'clock hour. And then by the 7, 8, 9 o'clock hour, we'll see a 60% chance hanging around the area. So, your Friday morning commute, make sure you have the umbrella and rain gear handy. Now, in terms of rain, here's what I'm thinking. The latest guidance model toned it down just a little bit from the 6 o'clock hour, sitting at about 2 fifths of an inch here in La Crosse, just over half inch in Sparta. The big players, though, still going to be Marshfield over towards Wisconsin Rapids, down towards Wisconsin Dells, Madison just shy of two inches of rain. And we need that rain. Matter of fact, here's the drought monitor. This was just updated today. There you go. Northwestern Dunn County still under a moderate drought. We're abnormally dry from, let's say, over towards Eau Claire, back up towards, over towards Dunn County, and then over towards Pepin County. And in just a smidge of Wabashaw County is abnormally dry. So, again, that rain is much needed. Maybe we can kind of put a dent in that deficit. So, here's the radar scan and you see just to the east of Rochester getting in on some thunderstorm activity. Now, this is the precursor of what's to come because it's this guy right here. This is going to sag its way to the south and southeast, and that's what's going to bring the rain chances in the forecast for the overnight hours. By Friday morning, you see that line stretching from Eau Claire down towards Volk Field. By 4, 5 o'clock, you can see it really starting to ramp up. By the noon hour, for the most part, it's out here, except for the southern portion of the viewing area, over towards Verocua, over towards Decora. Now, we're going to see temperatures in the upper 70s, low 80s for tomorrow. And then Saturday, we'll see a little bit of cloud cover, but still, not a bad Saturday, not a bad Sunday. We have that stray shower, too, in the forecast. Wouldn't cancel your outdoor plans by any means. Matter of fact, I'd make more. Go to the upper 80s, low 90s for Monday. Same story Tuesday. We're going to see a shower chance Tuesday afternoon going into Tuesday evening. And then upper 80s, low 90s continue for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So, if you have plans, Ken, to go to the Tremolo County Fair, not bad. Just take the rain gear just in case you get under a stray shower, but still, not a bad forecast by any means.
Not at all. Good summer forecast.
Yes, it is.
Thanks, Eric.
You bet.
Coming up in sports, the loggers are back to close out the first half of the season, plus a lot of playoff action from our Legion baseball teams. Rob has those highlights next.
News 8 Sports is brought to you by Mayo Clinic Health System. Whether you need routine care or treatment for a complex condition, Mayo Clinic Health System has convenient and safe options for the care you and your family need.
Why is the waterpark capital of the world always a good time? There's always something fun, this way, that way, and every which way. Go to wisdells.com and plan your trip today.
Oh, great. My wireless bill just went up.
Should've gone with US Cellular. They aren't raising prices on any of their plans.
Seriously?
Yeah, my price won't increase.
Well, that is refreshing. I feel like everywhere you turn these days, prices are going up.
Supply chain got us, too.
Don't get me started on the overhead cost.
At US Cellular, every plan for everyone is price protected.
You know, I respect a female entrepreneur.
US Cellular, where every plan is price protected.
I'm Alex Lazary, a Democrat, running to beat Senator Ron Johnson.
And I'm Lauren Lazary, and this is our daughter Eleanor. I know Alex will always fight for working families.
To get more money in the pockets of working people and lower costs.
By making paid leave available and healthcare more affordable.
And I'll always be a relentless supporter of a woman's right to choose.
Especially now. Alex is exactly the kind of ally Tammy Baldwin needs in the Senate.
So, I approve this message because we have to do better than having Ron Johnson as our senator.
Introducing new One a Day Multi Plus, a complete multivitamin, plus an extra boost of support for your immunity, brain, and hair, skin, and nails. New One a Day Multi Plus.
Cooley Auto, La Crosse's only dealership specializing in Southern rust-free vehicles. Most vehicles priced under $20,000. No pushy sales, simple financing, no dreaded trips to the DMV, just safe, reliable, rust-free Southern cars.
Stop in and see us today at the home of rust-free Southern vehicles.
Where you'll enjoy 60 days of no payment. Cooley Auto, we put the cool in Cooley.
See us on Rose Street in La Crosse. Call or visit CooleyAuto.com today.
The First Alert Weather App, stay ahead of the storm. News 8 Now Sports is brought to you by Mayo Health System. Here's News 8 Now's Rob Schiff.
It's playoff time. The Legion baseball season has flown by and now it gets real. A lot of playoff action all throughout the Cooley region in the next few days, and will start in Holman post-284, hosting the 17U Regional Tournament at Viking Field. First up on the schedule, Eau Claire taking on River Falls. All Eau Claire at this point in the sixth, up five, adding two. Jack Gabler gets this one to fall. Andrew Rudd scores to make it 6-0, still in the sixth. Elliot Height at the dish, he lines it in the center for a base hit. That scores Gabler to make it 7-0. Then later in the inning, nine-run lead for Eau Claire, bases full for Carter Barthen. He grounds one, a second. Height slides in safe, and that's the ballgame. 10-run rule in effect, Eau Claire gets the shutout win over River Falls. 10-0 the final. They'll take on Baldwin tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Holman hosting the North Stars to wrap up day one, and it's the host team going right to work. Adam Schmidt drills one into the gap in right center. Two runs come in, a score. It's 2-0 Holman. La Crosse, though, trying to make something happen. This is James Gruen lining a base hit in a left, but this one, all Holman post-284, continuing to pour it on in the sixth. Eli Edwardsen lost one in a center. Great effort from Nathan Schilling, but it falls in for a base hit. That makes it 4-0. Holman gets the shutout win at home, 5-0 the final. The lights shine the brightest in the postseason, and La Crescent not disappointing in this one. Brady Grupa getting things started. He grounds one a short. That's good enough for an RBI. Then later, La Crescent taking advantage of a Lanesboro mistake, trying to go for the double play, but the throw is off the mark and another run scores. And it's Elias McCool keeping his cool on and off the mound. He contributes with this shot in a right center. An RBI double makes it 7-1 in the fourth. La Crescent cruises in this one. They win it by a final of 9-1. Brewers on the West Coast taking on the Giants. Corbin Burns bending a bit in the third. Jock Peterson lines a base hit in a center. That makes it 2-0 Giants. This game currently in the fifth. Brewers have cut the lead in half. It's now 2-1 San Francisco. Twins opening up a four-game set against the White Sox. This one was over early. Bases full for Luis Robert, the fourth. He clears them into the second deck for a grand slam. Luis Robert makes it 6-1 Chicago. Then in the seventh, Andrew Vaughn gets a hold of one for his second homer of the game. White Sox go up eight. All Chicago in the series opener as the Twins fall 12-2 the final. Loggers opening up a four-game set at home against Bismarck. Larks down a run in the third until Spencer Saringard goes back up the middle for an RBI single. That ties the game at two. Same score now in the fourth. Loggers threatening. Jack Haley drills it back to the pitcher in the throw. Whoops, little bit offline. Here comes Blaze Priester from third. Loggers go back up by one. It's 3-2, but they're not done. Still in the fourth, Carson Horning, he's going to get the job done. This is going to score Jordan Donahue to make it 4-2 La Crosse. Loggers looking for some more insurance in the inning. Kobe Morales, he's going to provide it. He finds a hole on the left side to make it 5-2, but this game still going on. It's in the 11th inning. Loggers and Larks are tied at nine. NBA Summer League continuing in Vegas. Bucks taking on the Mavs. Marjan Bochamp off the steal, throws it down, but the story in this one, Lindell Wigington off the rebound, Wigington going coast to coast. Lefty Layan is good, two of his 25. Then in the second half, Bucks up big. Bochamp wide open, tries one from three, and he buries it. The Bucks' first-round pick chipping in with 11 points on the night. Milwaukee improves to 3-1 in the Summer League. Bucks get the win 100 to 89. So, good news for the Bucks fans out there, seeing Bochamp, first-round pick, doing well. But how about Wigington?
Yeah, little Iowa State product.
Yeah, he's been great.
I believe, undrafted, but you know, like, Summer League, kind of a place for some of those guys to shine a little bit, maybe cement themselves as a 12th man on a roster.
Yep.
Might be one of those guys. But yeah, Bochamp looks really darn good for 24th overall pick. Might be some insane value right there. That guy can jump.
Real quick, are you conflicted about the Larks and Loggers?
Not really.
Former Bismarck guy, right?
I did, I did cover Bismarck for two years, covered the Larks. They were actually in their first season when I first got out there, so they were kind of the hot new thing, but no conflict.
No conflicts, isn't it?
Roll Loggers.
That's it.
For life now.
And get the win.
That's right. Thanks, Rob.
More news after the break.
Don't fall for clickbait, fall for cluckbait with a doubly delicious chicken deal only at Hardee's.
Expand your outdoor living space with our huge selection of landscape blocks from Menards. Get a free estimate instantly with our Design and Buy landscaping program.
Get a free estimate instantly with our Design and Buy landscaping program. From patios, retaining walls, fire pits, and more, you can design the landscape of your dreams for free. Visit the store or menards.com to get started on your next project today. Right now, save 11% on everything, only at Menards. Save big money at Menards.
Those brave men and women of our armed forces, generations of them, why should today's burdens fall back onto them? They were there for us. Now let's be there for them. Your local Wisconsin energy providers and the Keep Wisconsin Warm Cool Fund are working together to deliver Wisconsin veterans in crisis, heat, power, and help staying in their home. But they can't do it alone. Donate today.
This is the highest inflation in four years.
I'm now living more of the paycheck-to-paycheck.
If you want to buy milk, it's so expensive, you have to cut out other things.
We need somebody that's going to be an advocate for Wisconsin.
Ron Johnson is fighting to lower taxes for the American families.
Ron Johnson is a fighter, as far as I'm concerned, and I know he'll fight for me.
Ron Johnson has my vote, and we need him where he is to continue to do his job fighting for us.
Wisconsin Truth Pack is responsible for the content of this advertising.
Dings, dents, scratches, big crunches, you know where to bring them. Pishki Motors Collision Center on Second Street in downtown La Crosse. When you've got a crew of professional body and paint technicians like ours, you provide them with the latest in repair equipment, and that's what we've done in this state-of-the-art, environmentally-friendly facility. We have customer drive-in lanes, soft-touch 24-hour car wash. So when the dings, dents, scratches, even the big crunches happen, bring them to Pishki Motors Collision Center on Second Street in downtown La Crosse.
Don't fall for clickbait, fall for cluckbait. Find one, get one for $1 when you order in the app, only at Hardee's. Thank you for watching News 8 Now, our community, your station.
If you're a consistent Facebook user, it's kind of easy to stay busy managing your personal profile. But imagine having two, three, or more profiles on one account. Well, Facebook is testing a new feature that would allow just that. The social networking site says one account could have up to five profiles. Now, the main profile would still need to be the name the user regularly goes by, but the others could have unique names and be tailored for relationships or interests, like close friends, coworkers, or specific hobbies. Now, if one profile violates the Facebook user agreement, the whole account would be subject to getting shut down. Wordle, the game that decides whether I'm going to have a good day or bad day. Five letters, six tries to get the word, and now it's getting three-dimensional. Popular online game is getting a board game version. Hasbro is partnering with Wordle's owner, The New York Times, to make its board game version. It's set to release in October. And we have a Code Red on the Cute Scale, literally red. Meet Bandit, the newest red panda at Madison's Henry Vilas Zoo, who has now made his public debut. Bandit joins the zoo's only other red panda, a female named Ty. Red pandas are endangered on the globe, fewer than 2,500 still living in this world. I'm sure, though, at Henry Vilas Zoo, they'll be very well taken care of. Man, cuteness scale off the charts. We'll be right back to wrap things up.
Connect with us on Twitter at @News8News, or you can always find us at news8000.com.
How do I get a new truck today? I really want that new ZR2.
If you had a time machine, you could back your time and order it.
Return mine, you, Marty! I want to order a new '22 Silverado ZR2 and have it here, say, May 26, 2022.
Silverado doesn't make a ZR2.
You may not know what it is now, but your kids are going to love it. Hey, remember me?
It's you! How did you know?
I'm Tim Michaels. Commanding the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier was an honor beyond measure. America is a miracle of countless sacrifices from unknown patriots. Honoring that is our duty. But today, America's under attack by radicals trying to tear down everything that makes America great. This is a fight we cannot lose. I'm Tim Michaels. I'm running for governor to help save the America that those before saved for us.
Tune in Fridays at noon for Financial Fridays with WNB Financial in Holman. Learn about important topics in banking and finance from a local team that's focused on service, solutions, and community. WNB Financial, more than a bank. Jalavet Family Farms, known for farm-fresh fruit and vegetables, but featuring so much more. Come see all that we have. Homemade bakery, large selection of locally-produced honey, gourmet popcorn, craft beer, wine, and cheese, meat and seafood, arts and crafts, and so much more. There is no substitute for homegrown freshness. Open daily, year-round. Jalavet Family Farms, West Salem.
Welcome to the brand-new Holiday Express and Suites. Whether you're here for business, family events, or a weekend getaway, we've got you[1696.16]